We're splitting. This is my backup because I left my other one that you probably seen elsewhere, but you got cooler stickers.
Yeah, I do, but like same colors.
Let's get down with it. District approved, right here.
Here's that.
Then give it to her. It's already back. You've got to come here.
I was trying to be.
Almost covered. This pops in. They wish to enter the sober homes. Do you drink?
That's a little bit.
Yeah, but you know.
This is.
I'm good with my hydro flask.
I was not trying to.
Good evening, everyone. I know we're going to be recording this and to be able to share out with the community. Are we ready?
Yep, we're all ready to go, so you can start whenever.
Outstanding.
Jeremy, do we have the presentation as well?
I was not aware of any presentation.
I sent it. Oh, okay.
We will commence in a few moments. Board members, if you want to use the restroom, your last opportunity for a bit.
Yeah, I don't want to speak. That's why I didn't make that what.
Um, we will have a presentation set up momentarily, and then we will get moving.
I got emails saying shortly we'll get to.
The first one I wouldn't worry about being on. We're just going to be here in the room.
Thank you, Jeremy. No. This more than. Okay.
I call the June 3, 2024 School Board In-Service to Order. It is 6:05 PM. We are in Conference Room C at the Fisher Administration Building at 12121 West North Avenue. Ms. Summers, please call the room.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Dr. Hoig.
Excused.
Ms. Willis.
Here.
Dr. Worley.
Here.
Ms. Hammer Rollin.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Dr. Jessa Benger.
Here.
And we have more this evening. The time is 6:05 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn into in-service?
I move to adjourn into in-service.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Ms. Summers, please call the room.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Dr. Hoig.
Ms. Willis.
Yes.
Dr. Worley.
Yes.
Ms. Hammer Rollin.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Dr. Jessa Benger.
Yes.
Uh, we are adjourned into in-service. Um, thank you to the members of the task force. Uh, this meeting is going to be recorded and will be shared out with the community uh over the next couple of days, soon as it's ready um to be shared by our uh talented technology staff. Um, we uh have a variety of different things that we'll walk through tonight, including uh the facilitator will be joining us first uh to share a variety of information about the process. Uh, and then there'll be an opportunity for several board members who reached out in advance. There was an opportunity for individuals to uh be able to speak for up to two minutes uh who remembers the task force, and several folks uh reached out in advance to make that request, and so we'll hear from individuals tonight. So about a year ago, um, Dr. Means and I, and then ultimately bringing to the board, uh felt that we wanted to bring together a large uh group from our community to get a sense of what are the values and priorities that we want to move forward with as a community over the next 50 years. Um, and we outlined a variety of different um topics that we knew were both pressing to the community at that time, uh that the board felt was pressing, uh and that we wanted to be able to study uh and use the community and our expertise within the community for feedback and consideration. Um, and so I'm excited tonight. Uh, the board received the report um about a week to 10 days ago, maybe two weeks ago, uh and I suspect my colleagues like myself have all read it carefully. Um, and will also be uh next receiving uh a administration uh recommendations uh that will be provided to us in the coming weeks and ultimately days. Um, a week from tonight, if I recall, um, the administration will be presenting their recommendations to the board. Um, and so looking forward to having all of these items come together to provide guidance and direction to us. So the in-service agenda for this evening, uh we'll be talking about a review of the process, a review of the 2075 Task Force Charge and findings. Uh, well, there'll be an opportunity if the board has any questions for the task force. Uh, it's a very thorough report, so it we may or we may not, um, but it was well-written. Uh, and then uh we'll ultimately uh adjourn uh round our our hard stop is about eight o'clock this evening, so we've got about two hours set aside for this. Um, my big thank you to get us going is a thank you to the members of the task force who put time and energy into um this group. Uh, I know we had originally 63 members of the community put their names forward. Several folks stuck it out through the full process. Uh, and thank you for your efforts in in um providing feedback and engaging uh with members of the community on important conversations that affect our children and our future. Um, with that said, um, if I'd like to call up our our facilitator and Dr. Means, can you introduce?
Facilitator for the spring phase of the 2075 Task Force was Ms. Paige Richards. Paige is now at the microphone. Paige, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. If we could have the slide doc somehow presented as well? Thank you for having me here tonight. It's really wonderful to get to see student representatives on this board because a lot of this is about you. So I am in deep gratitude to be in the presence of each of you and to the many task force members who are here tonight. So thank you so much. And the gratitude is multi. I want to take a moment just to acknowledge that of the 61 people who applied to be on the original task force, 44 people participated, and in the spring phase, we had 37 participants. So that is an amazing amount of people to have devoted 10 months of their lives to volunteer meetings on Tuesday nights and additional work outside of that. I also want to express gratitude to Dr. Means and his team for the vision to get a task force. Um, I worked a lot of school districts. Many school districts would not even encounter this kind of work because it could be hard and messy and um challenging, and I can understand why people would avoid this, and I appreciate the transparency of inviting people in to have hard conversations because they believe they are capable and they believe that they have something to offer. So I actually just want everyone to give a hand for all the people who've been involved with this because it's been a massive amount of work, so. This is the vision. You see the vision on the screen, and tonight we are realizing that vision. This group has worked hard for 10 months, and we are here to offer what are the themes that emerged from this multi-month process? And that this is really about commonality among stakeholders. The amazing thing about this task force is it has a group of people who have lots of different ideas and in different thoughts, and we found a lot of things that people had in common despite differences, and that's a really important, critical step and helpful to this Board of Education. I don't expect you to be able to read that, and I know all of you have seen this in the final report, but through all of the hard work, clear themes emerged from this task force, which offer the Board of Education a chance to see perspectives from this diverse group of people and to consider what you might do with them because these are hard topics to tackle, and you had people who spent 10 months studying these ideas come up with some serious and significant themes. This group spent during the spring phase alone six evenings. In fact, I'm sure many of us in this group chuckled tonight when it was raining because many of our nights involved rainstorms, tornadoes, and all kinds of wild weather, and it only makes sense that tonight we would be having a rainstorm as well. So the group through this time together was engaged with wicked problems. Now, the wicked problems are the historic problems your district is facing, and your district is not alone. These are problems statewide in public schools across our state. These are problems nationwide across public systems that are complex, do not have easy answers, and require new ways of thinking. If there were easy answers, you wouldn't need to have a task force involved. So having a chance to talk about complexity, knowing that it might be challenging, is a very brave, wise thing to do on behalf of the students in the school district who deserve people to take time to really think about what they might need. My job in supporting people to engage wicked problems during the spring phase is on the screen. It was my role to make sure all voices were heard. It was my role to make sure people could collaborate, meaning not only that I would hear their voices, but that they would hear the voices of each other. It was important that everyone had a chance to see the common values and shared beliefs that existed amongst the group. So the first night, beginning of February, I asked the group, what brings you here? What do you care about? Because I kept thinking, it is amazing to me. These people are showing up every single week, and it's been hard and bumpy, and here you are. So if you look over on the window over there in the rain, that is the chart we made. That is the chart we revisited every single meeting. Those are the values of the group. At the end of our very first meeting, people self-reported, wow, we did not know we had so many things in common. This became a place for us to come together. They also live on the screen. Also, because the group is coming in with many different ideas, it was important for us to show up as our best selves. These are four agreements we used. Every night we met, I talked about these agreements with the group. What does it mean for you to be uncomfortable and stay with it? So that you can make good recommendations on behalf of this community, so that you can listen and gain some ideas from each other. And this, those agreements supported us to develop and finalize feedback for all of you, input for all of you. Also, in groups of adults, it is important that we can show up as our best selves and be skillful. I know this Board of Education is familiar with these norms of collaboration. I know Wauwataosa School District as a system is familiar with these norms of collaboration. These are skills for how we can show up for each other. Can we slow down enough to listen to understand what people have to say? Because when we do, we might learn something new, and we might come up with more creative solutions. So the norms are critical for our work in work pods. I knew the design of the spring phase would be collaborative. We would be co-laborating together. In order to get people into work pods that would be randomly designed, my idea was to connect people around strategic goals. So our very first night, I had strategic goals posted all around the room, a poster for each one of those, and people self-sorted by their values. What brought you here? And then I just randomly went up to a group of strangers at each one of those strategic planned ideas and put them into small groups. It ensured that we had diverse groups that were randomly formed and that people were with similar things about why they were there. Each group had the time to get into all five areas of the charge. The school district took time putting together the briefs, and the briefs were complicated because these are complicated ideas. These are not light reading, and because of that, the school district understood there had to be avenues for people to pose questions. So we had parking lots, picture chart paper all over the room with each of the titles posted on the chart so that people could ask specific questions to each of the areas of the charge. That way, it supported the school district to be responsive. The school district I saw did their best to either reply that night if it was a clear enough answer or to get back, and sometimes it took weeks because sometimes there was research that had to be done. So the school district alone spent countless hours, I'm going to say, I'm going to guess like at least 100 to 150 hours, maybe it was even up to 200 hours, responding to the needs of the task force to answer more questions, and I know the task force also is grateful for that. To support people to be able to be present with each other, we use a strategy for working with humans called small fires. We move tables away. It's just people, people paying attention to people, paying attention to their ideas. It's based on neuroscience. We use structures and protocols. These were the things I brought to the task force. These protocols, the first part was to slow us down. When any of us read a report, we interpret different things because we have different filters. It was important that the group first had a chance to slow down and say, when you read that brief, what did it say to you? When you read this question, what does that question mean? Before we start to talk about creative ideas and how we might answer these hard wicked problems. While this provided discomfort for many of the people in the group, they also shared later. It was appreciated because it helps all of us slow down, myself included. We benefit from structures when we are gathering and messing around with hard ideas, especially that affect kids. There also part of the structure was for every night, a chance for people to reflect and then to share for the group so that we would benefit not only from hearing what surfaced as a group, but that the group would benefit from hearing what was important to them. Early on in the spring phase, it was early March. Dr. Means identified two task force representatives, Danielle Long and Kelly Goldman. I'm just going to quick give them a standing ovation. These women. Countless hours of time, we had six additional meetings outside of the structure of the task force along with Dr. Means, and the four of us became a team that was also able to use norms of collaboration, that were also able to show up and have uncomfortable conversations, and we all benefited from that. So I can't thank them enough. And working with them helped us hopefully as a group develop some more trust. When I came in, a lot of people did not feel as trusting, even though they were committed to the work. I hope through this process of being transparent, having strategies to support adults to be able to communicate and listen to each other might have developed some more trust amongst all of you. I also hope that by being transparent in all end stages of this process, you could trust the results. So Dr. Means and Kelly and Danielle and I spent countless hours identifying themes, going through the final, going through all of the work pod data. Because of this, we used qualitative data analysis. This was the best way to talk about wicked problems. It is the best way to be able to identify themes where things are not clear. I hope you check out the appendix of the report. There are two, and I hope when you check that out, you see it would be hard to give an elevator talk to answer what was a quick thing to say about any one of those big tasks that we were facing, which is why spending time and hours in the processes detailed in your final report is how we came to some ideas because wicked problems need time, and they need people to be able to step away and step back in and be able to look at the landscape, which led us to developing our final survey. I feel very proud of the final survey we developed, and it ended up being more comprehensive than we originally thought it would be, myself, that I thought it would be. I originally envisioned this would be 10 themes, and through the hard work of the four of us on this task force leadership team, it ended up being upwards to 20 themes. And then we asked the group to identify what are the five to seven themes that are the most important to you to bring forward to the Board of Education, which is what you see when you see the themes, and I know you have a chance to look at those. I know you'll have a chance to ask the group because ultimately this is a community. Wauwataosa community has a community task force. You are neighbors. You might see each other in parks this summer. I hope you go and say hi to each other. I I hope you find ways to show up and be uncomfortable together because we do better things together because these themes show that you have things in common after spending a lot of time understanding things that are very complex. So with passion and gratitude, I say thank you for letting me be your facilitator for the spring phase, and I look forward to the task force members having some closure to this process. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. For the community who maybe have been watching closely or less closely, I just want to kind of share the the five general areas that the task force engaged in. One was an examination of academic program programming considerations. Another was long-range budget and taxation considerations, long-range facility planning, transportation, and policy considerations. Um, so again, thank you to uh Paige, our facilitator, uh for your incredible work, for the district team and staff who pulled together a lot of data uh relatively quickly, very quickly, um, and for all the members of the task force who did a lot of a lot of good work on this. Um, at this time, I think we're ready to hear from the task force members. We're here on tree. If you want to come up and speak, you've got two minutes, and I've got a list of folks who have previously submitted a desire to interest, and I'll call off of kind of uh the order that I have folks shared with me, uh then slotted in some of the new folks who have um kind of laid additions. Uh, first up, and I was, I would also add, Mr. Morris will time uh to keep us on track, uh and he will time, time us and be stern and and all that good stuff, stern and thoughtful. Um, our first individual, Laura Wayne Scott.
We not doing the findings. Yeah.
Yeah, we are. Thank you. While we're while we got our ducks in a row, um, Ms. Richards is going to review the top themes that emerged from the work.
Well, the top themes that emerged, and they're also included in the final report. The first one says, before requesting a capital facilities referendum, Wauwataosa School District should create a comprehensive facilities plan that addresses immediate crises and articulates long-term solutions. Then the Wauwataosa School District should request additional facilities taxation based on that plan. 27 task force members rated that as one of their top five to seven themes most critical for the board to pursue immediately. The second theme, Wauwataosa School District should pursue a gradual reduction of open enrollment as part of a comprehensive plan that includes long-range facilities and school boundary line matriculations. 25 members of the task force said this should be critical for the board to pursue immediately. Wauwataosa School District should not maintain the current 14 buildings facilities footprint. 20 members of the task force put that forward. Wauwataosa School District should consider a K6 712 model and eliminate standalone middle schools. 19 members of the task force voted for that. Wauwataosa School District should decrease some expenditures that do not comprise the quality of academics. 16 of task force members agreed with that. Wauwataosa School District should eliminate one or more elementary schools. 13 members agreed with that. Wauwataosa should seek a $61 million operating referendum to keep programming and staffing at current levels. 11 members agreed with that. It would be hard for me to just briefly summarize anything beyond these themes because of the scope of the work, which is why it's so amazing. We've got task force members present here tonight, and please take time, as I know you are, reading that final report because you will see many creative solutions emerged. In fact, just as I'm scanning through this list, the idea of Wauwataosa considering a K6 712 model and eliminate standalone middle schools, again, 19 members put that forward. That was a novel idea that came through the work of the task force. The idea even of gradual reduction of open enrollment, that was an idea of the task force. Again, all of these are very. That was an idea of the task force. Again, all of these are very hard ideas that offer trade-offs. So when the task force is putting this forward, it means that they spent months really considering what might be the benefits and what might be the trade-offs. And through that hard, uncomfortable work. These were the things that they decided were most important as a group.
Thank you. The report is available to the full community. And so I, I would echo your recommendation of the importance of reading the work in full. So we'll hear certainly feedback from individual members this evening. But I think reading the full report will provide the best synopsis that we could possibly hope for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call up individual members of the community who serve in the task force. Who would like to speak?
I had the impression that the board was going to have approximately five minutes to ask questions and then ask response and clarity on all the different topics. Which obviously would be helpful to the public when doing this. Does the board not have any questions regarding the work and the recognition? That was our understanding of how the meeting was going to address the.
My understanding is that the board was going to have an opportunity to ask questions, but we would hear comments first and then be able to sit with those. We've got the report. We would hear the comments and then as we have clarifying questions, we would ask those of the group. Please, yes.
And I, I believe because people understood it the way that was described, some people weren't sure they wanted to make comments. And discussion. So I want to make sure that part of, I think, what room hearing questions that come up, they, they might have different comments.
And I would certainly invite members of the task force who do want to respond to questions. That there may be different, everyone I presume holds individual perspectives. And that the report provides a global perspective of it, not an individual perspective. I, I don't want to, we're not agenda to take public comment this evening, but we are going to hear from the members of the task force. And so I'm going to avoid kind of taking any public comment unless you remember the task force.
My question is related to the audio quality. Could I ask that all speakers, whenever they talk, speak into a microphone? And could I ask the president to speak a little bit louder because it's not coming across, the voice is not coming across. Clearly it might be desired, especially for recording, because I believe we are recording this. Yeah, we are recording and we need to have a full audio.
So for all members of the task force, if you can come up to the microphone before sharing your comment. So what we'll do, we'll take any comments folks have. You have up to two minutes to be able to share those initial comments. So we have two minutes that we're going to give everyone. The, the two that are three minutes are the two leads. At the close, who will finish at the end? And we can do three minutes and five. That's not the information that I had shared with me.
I apologize. The information that I had shared with the group is that they would have three minutes and that the closing comments for both Danielle Long and Kelly Goldwyn would be five minutes.
We'll do three and five minutes. So I have the individuals who are on the list. Board, if you want to take notes and we'll have an opportunity for questions as we go. Yep. Ms. Wayne Scott, your, your offense first.
Trying to keep it at 2:45. I'd first like to thank the school board and Dr. Means for the opportunity to serve on this committee. I am grateful for the school district staff who contributed to the process by supplying information and data requested by the task force and the community. There are a few final thoughts I would like to share with you. The first main policy, 5120 inter-district transfers. The data I and other task force members requested regarding the impact of inter-district transfers on the various school resident enrollment numbers was not discussed by the task force. When the resident count is taken in September and January each school year, each school has a resident count and non-resident count. The resident count number does not reflect the actual number of neighborhood resident students. Since it includes resident students who were allowed to inter-district transfer into or out of each school. If resident students were enrolled in their neighborhood school, the need to add non-residence seats at multiple schools would decrease. District data shows that the number of incoming inter-district transfers increased each year since 2020. Into the three of the new and renovated schools. While many of the other schools lost neighborhood resident, resident students. Ultimately filling those seats with non-resident students. Perhaps this was an expected outcome of the facilities referendum. Additionally, while data on student movement within the district also shows the number of resident students who leave their neighborhood for a specialty school. There is no data presented to the task force to show that these specialty schools increase resident student enrollment numbers. I encourage you to look at all the resident data that was requested by the task force, just as you do with the tuition waiver data. In March 2023, when the idea, idea of the task force was brought to you. I wrote to you asking that the task force include all the various stakeholders in our community. Including representation from every school community. And instead, Dr. Means made the decision to include everyone, all 61 people. As I attended the meetings, I was disappointed that throughout the process. I never met or had the opportunity for discussion with all the task force members in attendance. I realized through conversations that I did have, that at least a third of the final 37 participants were within one elementary boundary area. I'm still not sure that every school neighborhood, especially school had a representative. I appreciate all the task force members who attended the meetings and shared their thoughts and ideas. I am disappointed that a more inclusive and fully representative membership was not sought out by the administration. There are no clear, clear-cut solutions and certainly there are a lot more questions about the future of the Wawatosa School District. It is my hope that, that you go beyond the surface and take a critical look at all the data that was requested by the community and the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greg French.
Reserve my time to speak.
Mr. French, this is, I'm going to go through the list once and I'm not going to, kind of reorder. So you pass?
Yes.
Okay. Sean Lundey?
Thank you. Sorry. I'll duck down. Just drawn, I just jotted down some quick notes. I don't have three minutes worth of content for you, but first and foremost, I just really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the task force. I've had the opportunity to work with the school district on one other occasion and volunteer to be on a committee. Great staff, great experiences in both occasions. So I appreciate being able to serve. Thank you to Dr. Means, the whole staff, to Paige. And a shout out to my pod for all of the, all the work that we've done over the past few months. I think we did as a group find value in both the fall and the spring sessions. They were very distinct. I think we were very data and education forward in the fall. And pretty results oriented in my opinion in the spring. Both had their values. Paige did an awesome job for our group, I think. I have three main takeaways, three main points. First being that I support a resident-focused district, meaning significantly reducing open enrollment as a district strategy. Second, I do like the idea of thinking outside the box and the one middle school or junior high or whatever kind of model and potentially one Wawatosa High School, I think that would, we would have a top 10 in the state high school across the board if we were to do something like that. And then my own little pet project, as a McKinley parent. I think that we should have a policy that keeps middle school students when, when you go to one middle school or the other. That you stay with that middle school cohort classmates, whatever, when you go to high school. So if you're a Longfellow student, you go to East. If you are a Whitman student, you go to West. Kind of gets rid of all of the McKinley stuff or whatever with moving borders from Swan Boulevard or a hundred students one way or the other in different high schools. I think that if you just balance that out with you stick with your middle school, that's where you go to high school. And so, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Tanya Jar.
Hi. So I joined the task force because I had high hopes that we would be able to find a way to represent the concerns of the community and work to find solutions. Not because I wanted to spend hours away from my family or deal with the misconceptions and criticism that came along with being a member of the task force. I've always felt that I have a unique perspective to share as a longtime resident of the community, an employee of the district who works in every school and a parent of kids in the district. I wanted to help ensure that all voices in the community were heard, not only those that of a relatively small cohort that's connected to and aligns with some of our school board members. In recent years, there's been a growing distrust in our school board. There's been misinformation spread throughout our community, false narratives, rumors of survey data scrubbing. I wanted to know the truth. I wanted to know what the district data was truly showing and understand the big picture. Data is important, obviously, but the interpretation of data is what truly matters. I didn't want cherry pick data points, a biased interpretation or someone else's narrative. I wanted to be informed and understand it for myself. Not because I wanted to point fingers. Not because I wanted to expose district leaders or school board members or shed light on negativities. But we cannot solve problems that we deny exist. For years, many community members have been feeling dismissed and ignored by our school board and we were met with resistance. The task force proved to be a much more nuanced process than expected. Optimism and faith in the potential impact of the task force decreased throughout the process. Unfortunately, many, many members of the task force felt their efforts were futile. And more than half of them didn't see the process through until the end. Some argue that because school board members are elected by the community, they therefore represent the values and priorities of the greater community. Based on the community's survey results and task force report, I would argue that that is not in fact the case in Wawatosa. As someone who has always hovered near the middle myself, I have long hoped for balance on our school board. And unfortunately, we don't have that. I did feel however, personally, that we did find balance on the task force. The task force was made up by community members of various ages, various neighborhoods with wide ranges of experiences, opinions and values. After receiving all of the information that was presented to us. Most members who likely didn't find themselves on the same side politically were able to find common ground and agree on most of the issues. I do hope that the school board understands that the final opinions of the task force are a fair representation of the community's priorities. And carefully considers the information in the final report so that our efforts were not in vain. And so that we can move forward as a community planning for the district's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla, thank you.
I wrote out a similar thing, but it's hard to follow, Tanya. I joined the task force because I have a three-year-old and I am a total alum and I care and I love these schools. So I have taken an active role. I was on the strategic plan and then I did the task force. And I would like to echo her in that it was a diverse room and a messy process, but the outcome is sincere and it did provide options. I also want to talk about the fact that it's hard to solve problems that are not clearly defined. And I'm hoping that the problems are more clearly defined for you. Because some of the processes within the task force seemed aimed or strategic, but not openly presented. We didn't know the background or where we were really headed. And I don't know if that's purposeful. If there was an agenda or if that's just because it was such an open process. But it's hard to solve problems you don't have clearly defined and it's hard to reach goals when they're not specifically stated. So I think we did a decent job of reading between the lines and trying to formulate the information into something that could be used. But I don't think we have all the answers as a task force. And I don't think we got to the end. And that's just my sincere feelings about it. We had some ideas. We had plans that we brought forward, but we didn't actually model them out completely or discuss the positives and negatives of those. We did not reach a community consensus in that respect. I do think that there are things that I would hope that you would really sincerely consider. Which are open enrollment being reduced to a minimum amount, a resident focus and schools being right-sized accordingly. I do want to say that right sizing does not necessarily need to mean closing schools. And I hope that you will consider closing classrooms, maybe eliminating teachers, turning off some lights. We don't need to overhaul everything for $500 million and get there and wish we didn't do it. So take the time. I know that you guys are in the hot seat for this and decisions need to be made. But I hope that you will take the resident and taxpayer focus because I do think that that message is coming in clear. I appreciate your time. Thank you for doing the task force. I think it was a positive experience.
Thank you. Todd Kaler.
First off, I just wanted to echo my appreciation for the opportunity. The opportunity to, to speak with other members of the community directly, face to face. People that I agree with more than others and getting those perspectives. It was, it was a great opportunity to really think them, think some things through from those different perspectives. One thing I, I guess I, one request to the board is please, please take to heart what we've presented to you. And there's been some apprehension throughout this process that especially after the January open enrollment situation where both the administration and the task force kind of came with the same conclusion and the board didn't quite take it all the way, followed some of that, but not all of it. So we put a lot of time into this, put a lot of thought into it. So please, please don't, don't just kind of sit on your ideological bubble or in your, your neighborhood echo chambers. Please value all the different perspectives that have been put together here. I think one big overriding theme is we want some data-driven decisions going forward. We had a lot of questions that didn't have answers and it's kind of like, well, why wouldn't the district have asked this question already? So I think that's, that's a big part of what we want. We want data-driven decisions and, and we want a long-term kind of outlook. We don't want to jump from referendum to referendum. Patching, you know, we fixed problems for three years and then we'll have another referendum. We'd like you know, when we talk about closing schools, that's a long-term solution. So if we're going to make that decision, that would be made with a, with a view where, you know, I mean, with the 2075 task force. The idea is to solve problems for the long term. So please, please do, kind of, if you're going to ask for money, have a specific purpose and a specific plan. Don't just ask for money and keep doing what we're doing. And especially when it comes to finances and stuff, we see what's going on with MPS. Make sure there's transparency. I think sometimes, I mean, we had discussions earlier about, you know, public comment and stuff. And there was some, some feelings that, you know, maybe we're trying to do things in the dark. There's not always cameras available at all the different committee meetings. So transparency, I think, is another big theme that we'd like to see. When it comes to where we're putting that money, I think everybody had a preference toward investing in the classroom. Less for administration and, and buildings and whatnot. We really want kids to have support in the classrooms. And also with referendums, I think we saw with Milwaukee. When you keep going back to that well, we're starting to lose a little bit of support. So I think we're, it's only going to be so many opportunities. So let's make sure we kind of get the bang for the buck that we're looking for. And also go in and kind of switching to the STEM and Montessori, there's kind of some mixed messages in our report.
Your time.
Okay. I think the big thing we're going for though is it's, it's a draw to the district, it seems. So figure out a way to either integrate it or, or offer it in some, some manner.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, Benjamin Smith.
Um, so I just real briefly about myself, um, so you can kind of understand where I'm coming from a little bit. Uh, I was, before I moved to Wauwatosa, I was a social scientist at, at the Rand Corporation, and, uh, that's just a, a public policy research organization that kind of helps different parts of the government, uh, figure out, uh, what to do with their money and, and hopefully solve some of their problems. Um, a lot of my research was with the Department of Defense, and, uh, although it's a bit of a different scale, a, a school board, uh, like the Department of Defense, uh, faces an uncertain future. Uh, we don't know what the threats are, uh, out there, and, um, I think there's, um, some important things that hopefully you guys can look for as you go forward. Um, I won't kind of recapitulate some of the, the issues with the, the task force. Um, but as you sort of think ahead, uh, and evaluate different proposals, I had a couple, uh, suggestions. The, the charge or the goal of the task force, uh, were things like, should we reduce open enrollment? Should we have busing? Should we, uh, change the boundary lines? Uh, I don't think these are, uh, really goals, but more like policy levers. Um, they're kind of dials you can twist or, or switches you can flip to help you get where you want to go. Um, but it was never clear, uh, quite where we, we wanted to go, what, what are our values and goals? We did get some things on paper there, uh, that came kind of very late in the game, uh, but I think it should have been one of the first things we figured out. Uh, what are the, what are the ways people evaluate whether the school district is doing a good job and then evaluate our, our options, uh, with respect to those? Um, and that didn't happen, unfortunately, but I think it would be, be valuable. Uh, you do have a strategic plan. Uh, I think one of the, the, the problems with the strategic plan is it, it just has, um, it doesn't, uh, address trade-offs. Uh, you know, you're kind of in a restricted, uh, monetary environment, you have constraints. Um, some of those objectives will be intention, uh, and I think it's worthwhile to be very explicit about what those trade-offs are, uh, which values and objectives and goals are more important at different times and under what circumstances. Um, you'll eventually get presented with a course of action or, or hopefully, I think, uh, multiple courses of action that you kind of have to decide between. Um, and I think you should really kind of demand a, a very clear basis for the assessments and the, the recommendations, uh, whether those assessments are, are technical or subjective. Um, and people's stand, people's standards differ. Um, but for me, I think presenting a very clear, logical walkthrough from assumptions to assessments to recommendations is super valuable. What you have with the, the final report is kind of people's opinions, and we looked at a lot of things, but none of it got reported. None of it's in the, in the, in the report, how we came to our decisions, how we evaluated evidence, and why we, we chose the things we did. That's super helpful, uh, especially for you guys as you kind of make decisions. Um, I think you should also demand to be presented with serious options, not stereotypes. Um, I think people are, uh, reluctant to cut, uh, the, the budget, and it's understandable, it'll probably cause some pain. Um, but the, uh, you know, there are ways to make a proposed cut look as dire and unpalatable, uh, as possible, so that you choose the other options. I've got five and six, but, uh, I don't know. Call later and, uh, while supplies last, I can provide those. Thank you.
Well, and what I would say is if folks have written comments, you're welcome to also email them to the board individually or collectively. Uh, we'd be happy to, to review them. Thank you very much. Um, next up, Laura Reed.
Thank you for this opportunity. I do think that this task force was very beneficial, uh, to the community and hopefully to the board and school district for, um, moving forward. Is that better? Okay, a little shorter. Although this task force has varying opinions on the charge areas we have been presented, there is one thing we all have in common. We want what is best for our children and Wauwatosa as a community. It is remarkable to see this community have the determination to push for the positive changes we all want, need, and strongly care about. With that said, we all want the best schooling to help raise amazing humans who are kind, respectful, smart, and determined. It takes a village to raise good humans, and the school district plays such an integral part of this. Our children are our future. It would be wonderful if we were able to have it all: small classroom sizes, a walkable school community, high achieving academics, strong social support, specialty programs, competitive pay for district employees, transportation, et cetera. However, our state budget does not allow for that. Although having it all would be optimal, I think many residents would be extremely happy with the school district if they made the tough decisions that need to be made to support the needs of the community and children. There are unhappy families in the school district, and many leave for what they consider better school districts. If the tough, tough decisions are not made by the school district now, over time, we will not only lose families, Wauwatosa may become a less desirable community to move to. Based on the final results of the task force recommendations and the community survey, there are reoccurring themes that the majority believe need to occur in order to address the urgent needs of the school district. Reduce the current district facility footprint. Before requesting capital or facility referendums, create a comprehensive facilities plan to address immediate needs and long-term solutions. Modify school boundary lines. Reduce open enrollment. Decrease expenditures that include reevaluating district-level staffing and internal costs. Before the district requests a referendum from the public, if that's the way we to go, I think the following needs to occur for a referendum to pass. Transparency and detail in how the school district cut costs and by how much. Close one or more buildings. Reduce open enrollment for the long term. Show full transparency of a referendum breakdown. Obtain more than one bid for any facility referendum requested. I strongly believe the public would vote yes to a capital and/or facilities referendum if needed, um, if they saw the school district making the decisions above. The public needs to see the school district doing the work, making the hard decisions, and cutting expenses. Although there are various options to make the above happen, I am in support of a K through six, seven to nine, and 10 to 12 model. This would keep walkable elementary schools, reduce two buildings, and raise the competitive level of academics and sports.
Good time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Danielle Long. Five, three. She'll have another time at the end.
Okay.
I joined this task force over a year ago. I think Paige said 10 months, but I think our first meeting was in June, so that means we're looking at a year. Um, I came here looking for accountability and transparency from this board and the district. I spent a year of my life on this process, and I didn't walk away, though I wanted to several times. I'm here tonight to see this process through. Um, while it's sort of been mentioned, I think it's important not to gloss over the fall process under a different facilitator. Um, I wish we would have talked about that more tonight, because that was a challenge, and I think that's why a lot of people chose to leave. Um, it was very disorganized, and it was disappointing in a lot of ways. I will start by touching briefly on the community survey results. These results vary greatly from the 2018 referendum survey. The most significant takeaway is that only 33% of those surveyed believes funds are being managed appropriately in the district. I truly hope you all hear that and don't dismiss it because of the inconvenient truth that it is. Wauwatosa taxpayers, who do not have children in the district, were definitely among those who do not like the direction things are going in. In a meeting several months ago, Mr. Jessup Anger mentioned that he was focused on bringing value to the ta, resident taxpayers. I agree that this should be a priority, and this board has a lot to do to deliver on that promise, value to the, to the taxpayer. People have left, been left scratching their heads, wondering what happened to this once great school district. I truly hope you will listen to those who have lent their time and efforts to addressing these complicated problems. This will be a challenge for this board, because the right thing for the overall financial health of the district may fly, fly in the face of your ideologies. Our task force considered several factors in order to help restore this district to greatness and provide the value that resident taxpayers deserve. Each and every decision you make must be done with resident enrollment in mind. While some might try to say that enrollment is stable or increasing, this is simply not true. Using patients at Children's Hospital or those incarcerated at Bell Phillips to pad the numbers is disingenuous at best and leads many of us not to trust the data. The enrollment projection study predicted that maybe, just maybe, we will see roughly 200 new students by 2035. There are a lot of stars that would need to align in order for that to happen, and at the rate things are going, I wouldn't count on it. Uh, there's never any acknowledgement of the number of families who have left and continue to leave. I, I know so many of them, and, uh, they just shake their heads and they go. Um, I'm not going to talk about the themes. I'm really glad that we actually did, rather than just having them in tiny print-up on that slide, because that's a major part of the work that we did. Um, I won't repeat them, um, but that's really important tonight. STEM did not rise to the level of being a high priority in those themes. Um, I'm not someone who had children in the STEM program, but I firmly believe that STEM families need to be surveyed before any move is made. If a decision is made to end standalone STEM programs, which I sense you have already made, then it's crucial to ensure this won't harm resident enrollment numbers. Again, make this decision based on fiscal responsibility, not, not your ideologies. I will comment more on the footprint matter in my final remarks. One of the greatest flaws in this process was the decision to send out emails to Underwood and Washington families, letting them know their schools might close. That was not a task force decision, that was not something that we were made privy to, and it was just a theoretical conversation at the time. That move caused unnecessary panic and made this process so much harder than it needed to be.
Good time.
Thank you. Good timing. Thanks, Phil.
Next up, Josh Blakely.
Thank you, everyone. So I think that the, the main problem that we're trying to solve is the lack of state funding. And as a result, we have a revenue problem, so our solution should be a revenue solution. But all we were presented with on the task force were cost solutions. Close schools, every scenario that came up was closing schools. There was never a scenario presented that talked about revenue solutions. There were questions at the end about, are you willing to do this? But there were no, there was no discussion about the trade-offs of closing schools versus raising revenue. Um, I do say I appreciate Paige's process, but I think that, uh, that, um, causes a bias in the data, the outcome data, because if you're presented with one thing and one thing only, that's what you're going to come up to as a solution. I think there's also the possibility of a change in Madison, changing the funding for schools, and I think a long-term answer of closing schools is not appropriate when there's a short-term possibility for additional funding. I also encourage you to look at non-monetary, uh, issues when we look at this, uh, the effect of closing schools on our communities, uh, when you look at the grade schools. I'm a Jefferson parent, and it is the school that is on the chopping block when it comes to grade schools, and it will eviscerate our community. Also, I would like you to look for the research. Before we go about closing middle schools, what does the research say about the best way to educate those students? Because really, it's about the students at the end of the day. And before you do that, look at the actual research and what those outcomes have been for those districts who have done it, um, versus the other way around. And I'll just say that I have emailed the board in the past on my position on open enrollment, and I think that, uh, reducing it is, uh, not in the best interest of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Burke.
I spent the last 10 months sharing my insight and perspectives on what direction we should take moving forward, so I'd like to take this time to wrap up with some final thoughts and reflections. We need to acknowledge that multiple truths can occur at the same time, that Wauwatosa is a city that has deep roots in history and tradition, and those traditions are meaningful for some residents, and not all of those traditions are serving our current population or the reality of our budgets. That change is hard, and sometimes it's necessary to the board. If there's one consistent theme I saw across the task force over the last 10 months, it's that one decision will set off a chain reaction, and there's no clear path to show which way the dominoes will fall. The decisions you ultimately make must center around the needs of all of our students, rather than the wants of adults. My ask is that you make the best decisions that are available to you, and when the dust settles, focus less on whether you made the right decisions and more on making your decisions right. Ultimately, there are no wrong decisions when you are acting from the values of the person you want to be. To the community as a whole, we are people first. We were people before we were volunteers, just as our educators and administrators were people before they took their jobs and our elected officials were before serving. We are all people when we are serving in our roles and when we're not, and we will still be people long after we leave the roles you know us by. And we are people whether you are standing in front of us on the other end of a phone or behind a keyboard. Your words matter. Engage with one another as if all of our children were watching, because they are. Don't let a divisive topic divide us. Unite around the common goal and acknowledge that there are different ways to achieve it. Figure out how to work together and support each other. Lean into one another, listen to each other even when you disagree, especially then. Growth doesn't happen in your comfort zone. Remember that unity and diversity is stronger than unity and similarities, and the only people who need to come out of this a winner are our children, all of our children. My final thought and what I will take away with me from the last 10 months is this. There are people in this community who are capable and willing to have difficult conversations with respect and civility. Don't let this be the last one.
Thank you. Brian Hurt.
Hey, thanks, everyone, um, for giving us the time. Um, so one, one major theme that you're hearing, I just want to make sure you hear clearly, is I, I think there was consensus on the task force that we're interested in having the school board make, uh, hard decisions and, uh, you know, just as was talked about to consider all the, you know, the domino effect of making these interconnected decisions and make, you know, make them to set us, um, to, to set us on the right path forward. Um, but one, uh, of all the information presented to me, one thing I want to share is that, uh, I found that the results of our, uh, our financial challenges are the result of decades of underinvestment in our school system, and that there's recent increases in inflation that have brought the budget crisis, uh, to a head. Uh, I, I really just had one observation I wanted to share that I thought could be counterintuitive. I found that there's a tendency to support, uh, there are tendencies to suggest that some of the things we want for our schools, like well-paid teachers, property, transportation, updated facilities, et cetera, are things that we cannot pursue at the moment because of the current budget shortfall. I'll suggest that we're not a household or a small business that needs to tighten our belt because of some loss of income we don't control. This is a local government providing a public good that benefits the community, the children of our community, and by extension, Wauwatosa. There's no windfall or change in economic conditions that will make these choices easier sometime in the future. As a community, we can make a choice to have great schools. Of course, these decisions involve a cost-benefit trade-off, and partly because of some underinvestment and short-term thinking in the past, these costs are significant. But I want to reinforce, this is a clear choice we have the opportunity to make as a community. I applaud the efforts of the board and Dr. Meehan's administration to push us all to make difficult, long-term decisions that will help our school district thrive for generations. And in that process, I encourage us all to remember, this is not a situation out of our control, but a choice that we get to make as a community. Thanks.
Thank you. I have two more folks on my list. Uh, Kelly Goldman is up next.
Hi, everyone. Um, I would also just like to thank you all for forming this task force and giving this small sample of our community a chance to wrestle through these challenges. It really, I think, more than anything, just gave us all the perspective that there are no easy answers, and every solution has trade-offs, and, um, we have to be willing to compromise. I'm so grateful to the administration and the board for spending so much time, giving us so much information. The data requests were enormous. The amount of data that exists now in the community Q and A and on the task force website is mind-blowing to me. Any question anyone in the community asks me, I can pretty much find the answer there. Um, no stone was left unturned, and you really tried to help our community and all of us understand where we are and what our options are for the future. Um, I tried to come into this process with a really open mind. I have strong opinions in general, but I really wanted to try to find common ground with others on the task force, to just try to find solutions that are going to create good outcomes for our students in our district. None of this is easy, but we have to make some choices, so I was hopeful that we could find some commonalities. And my thinking really evolved on a lot of things. I mean, things that, when I first came in and thought I would never be able to get behind the closing of a school building, my thinking has evolved on that, and I think a lot of us, as reflected in the survey results, realize that And I think a lot of us, as reflected in the survey results, realize that these brick and mortar schools that we have and love, we have to be willing to adapt and change for the future. So I think that the rest of our community is also coming to terms with some of these wicked problems and these tough decisions that we're all going to have to make. And just echoing others, I hope we can move forward with respectful conversations and collaborative conversations because as much as we've all given our insight, the decisions are yet to be made and the changes are yet to be made. I just want to say, I think the administration and the board has shown a ton of authenticity and integrity and transparency throughout this process to us and to the community. Every decision you guys make reflects a true desire to do what's right by our students, and that's difficult in a lot of ways. But I really have a lot of faith in this board as you make your decisions. So as you wade through what we bring to you, what the community brings to you, the survey results, I would just encourage you to continue to stay true to yourselves and true to what you know is best for our kids because you are going to hear a lot of noise, as others have said, and there are adults who think they do or don't want certain things. But really, I appreciate and I encourage you to just keep your focus on the students because that's why we're all here.
Sarah Lorand.
So probably first, first off, what everyone else had said, I was put down that I was so thankful to the school district for putting together a very diverse group of people to help provide insight and understanding of the current state of the district and have the opportunity to discuss some really difficult questions. As I think Danielle Long mentioned, one thing that we wasn't brought up in the beginning was really the difference between the fall and the spring. And I do think that one, one of my takeaways, looking at what, you know, our final document came up with, was that there were, my mind, two, maybe even three, or probably more, issues that as a large task force group, we did not dive into like the others. So in the fall, we dived into open enrollment, facility, understanding the budget. But there were a few things that, once we came up with, once our briefs were presented, the brief specifically on transportation and also related to policies like the McKinley boundaries. Those were things that were discussed in our small pods, but were not discussed in a larger group. And as painful as the fall was, there was some more information and more questions that could come up by having us talk in the larger group first before getting into our pods. I'll say on transportation, I was in a, my pod had five members. I was the only member who represented a West Side school. And every, the other four members in my group told me that they appreciated my perspective on how the East Side and the West Side schools were different. That that wasn't something that they had realized or thought about until I brought it up in our small pod conversation. So what I took, my feeling that I took from that was there were things specifically on transportation. And then again, also on boundaries, the boundaries question specifically was talking about McKinley. And that was not something that, in a larger group, we discussed and had some very specific nuances. And that was one, the nuance and the difference between the East Side and the West Side was one theme that I did not hear come up in our larger group. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of put that in your mind. And I will send you my comments about boundaries and transportation. But I, and I would appreciate if Paige or someone else thinks differently in that. But that's really what I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Again, we've exhausted the list of everybody who I had who requested to speak in advance. If other members are less comfortable speaking in public and want to send emails, please do. We would be happy to read either your written comments or if you've already have written comments or have other items you'd like to share, you can send that to the public comment email if you'd like it publicly shared. Then that'll be posted in a future board packet, or you can just send it to the board. Know that anything you send to the board is public, but it will be pushed out per se in an agenda as submitted to the board. We've got our two final speakers who, as Paige already articulated, really stepped up and did additional leadership of the group, and each of them will have comments. Before we move into that, does the board want to have any questions right now that we want to ask? Or anything? Or do we want to wait and hear from our two final comments? And then? The two final comments? Okay. I will entertain questions or comments from the board. Mr. Meyer.
Twenty years ago, when I was elected for the first time, after I was elected, we were presented with a wicked problem, as it's phrased here tonight. When I ran, we knew there were problems, but we didn't know if they were wicked problems. We didn't call them wicked, wicked problems back then. But between the election April that seated three board members where I came in and the following election 12 months later where four board members were seated, the board tried to solve the wicked problem. The community did not agree with the board's chosen solution. And in the second election that had the four board members, the community seeded new faces and the decision between the three-board seat election and the four-board seat election was reversed. So we are now facing, as we know, in advance of the three-seat election and the four-seat election, that we have wicked problems. This board was not elected while facing full knowledge of the wicked problems. My question is, should this board try to solve these wicked problems now on capital spending? Operations is different because we have to keep the lights on. But should this board, not elected with knowledge of the wicked problems, try to solve the problems and then let the two elections fly in the 12 and 24 months from now? Or whatever, that, you know, that 10 and 22 months? Or should we give the community the two years now, knowing we have the wicked problems, to elect board members who are running to solve the problems? Did you see my question? Try to solve it now. Take a chance that we didn't get it right. Or give the community notice that the next two elections in 22, in, you know, 10 and 22 months are for people to solve this problem, and then the problem must be solved. If we choose to wait until after the two election cycles, a referendum would need to be, I believe, in some respects, only an operating referendum because we have the question before us about whether we should have an operating referendum or an operating referendum and a capital referendum. So there's what's come to my mind tonight.
Well, and Mr. Meyer, my, one of my responsibilities, what was interesting is 20 years ago, the board had decided to close, and I was not here, but my understanding of the history is the board had decided to close Wilson Elementary.
Yes.
And the community then demanded that the board not, and not that they, since they don't close Wilson, they literally unclosed.
They seeded, right, the, the community in that, the vote to close Wilson was in January. And in April, the community seated four board members who were committed to reopen Wilson.
Yep. And they balanced the budget at that time with open enrollment. So the, yes, the community at that point,
Yes.
And again, I wasn't here, demanded that the school be reopened and that open enrollment be, they didn't say use open enrollment, that's how the board balanced the budget at that point.
Yes, and I was on the group that supported keeping Wilson open and expanding open enrollment. And we also made cuts that year after the four were elected. My positions now are not the same because as Dr. Means has explained, the economics of open enrollment is profoundly different now than what it was 20 years ago. So I don't believe in kicking the can down the road, but I do recall from 20 years ago, a board that wasn't elected to solve the problem did its best and the community disagreed. And we had probably 12 extra months of turmoil while that was shaking out. To, you know, there's no substitute for election day. You know, that's the mightiest survey of them all, and when you really know. And so I, I don't know what I think about it. I'm just raising the question if someone wants to try to answer that question. And it's a pretty short answer, solve it now or wait 22 months. But we do have to solve the operating question, though. I believe that.
And we're not going to be taking any public comment. Oh, you were, what you're articulating, you're asking the task force.
Yes, I'm asking the task force.
Understood.
And this is a very sincere question from me. I am torn right now about what to think.
I would, I would say to you that we cannot kick the can down the road. I mean, based on the financials that we have seen as a task force, that would not be in the best interests, interests of the district. I do think that as a community, people know what's going on in general, at least those that are engaged enough to understand what's going on in terms of the talk about closing schools and open enrollment, that, that's pretty, that's out there. So it wouldn't be a surprise. So I think you should go forward with a decision. And my understanding, really, it's really the school district doing a lot of the work and presenting that to the board who makes the final call. So really, it's up to the school district, in my opinion, the way I look at it. It's up to the school district that they are really presenting a comprehensive plan, being very transparent in what that looks like, where we're going, where we're headed, taking hopefully a lot of consideration into the work that we've done as a task force and then bringing that forward to you to sort through, ask the hard questions and make sure, and make adjustments if needed. So I would say you need to act now.
So in a political sense, I, right now, my strongest inclination, and I'm not making an announcement here, I am what's called a lame duck in that I am coming to the end of my term in the board. And if I don't run, I have no accountability anymore because I don't run again. Political accountability, that is. But I see the need to be responsible as well, as you're saying, and to solve the problem now. Or try our best. Is that what you're saying? Try our best to solve the problem now.
And just a quick comment of a process. Thanks for pushing back. I got caught up in the philosophical conversation and was kind of like thinking he was asking rhetorical questions. And so not to the-
Please, sir, not philosophical. Very real for me.
Thank you for kind of noting the, your response. I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Meyer, I would just say thank you for your comment. 20 years ago, the Board of Education, unilaterally, as seven board members, made a decision. If there is a decision for this school board to place a referendum or referendum questions on a ballot, it then empowers the community to make the decision. That's a very different process than what happened 20 years ago when the board unilaterally made a decision to close a school. So I would say respectfully, that's a very different pathway that this board can choose to do. And now if the board unilaterally decides to make a decision among the seven of you and don't allow the community to weigh in, that's different. Then, then what you're expressing is very simple. It's, it's deja vu all over again. If you do, if you do what happened 20 years ago. But I, I don't think that there's any recommendation to allow the community not to weigh in. The decision of a board is to decide if you're going to place a ballot question, or excuse me, a question on the ballot, then the entire community gets to weigh in. That's the difference.
I think the question is well taken. Sir, can you introduce yourself as well?
My name is Bill Keith, and I came into this a little bit innocent. I know something about post-secondary education, but I didn't come in, I don't have kids in the school and didn't come in with fixed opinions or dug in about anything. I've learned an enormous amount, mainly about how humble people should be, about how complicated K-12 education is. But here's the takeaway I think you need from this. What people realize in their conversations, whatever commitments they came in with, is that the environment is changing. Budgetary, regulatory, demographic, political, it's all changing and the status quo is not an option. These problems are wicked because it's trade offs all the way down. There's no easy answer. And so the top line takeaway from the survey was people are willing to consider all sorts of triggering things. Cuts, referenda, school closings, if they're in the context of a total plan. If they just sit by themselves, they seem pointless and harmful. If they're in the context of a total plan, then they're moving forward. So right now, it's June. Elections are in November. That's a short amount of time. You could look a year out. But the question is, are there short-term plans versus long-term plans? I'm open to that. But that's what people want to see is a total plan that takes into account the needs of the students in the district and all the relevant stakeholders.
The only point of information I have is the board elections are next April. Big election, November. Yes.
Hi, Kayla. Not to beat a dead horse, but along the same themes, I think, just for some context, with the open enrollment thing, I know the administration and the task force had recommended a district-wide minimum class size model. We went with a district-wide mid-class model. And I think the thinking there among the administration and the task force, I believe, was, you know, incrementally act now as we can. I mean, it's a dynamic situation, as others have said. If we didn't have a referendum and it doesn't pass, your options are wildly different than if we have a referendum and it does pass. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, we can't sit on our hands. We need to take small steps and take large steps while we can. But I don't think, to their point, I don't think not acting is really an option.
Dr. Willian.
Are you ready to move on to a different question?
Yes.
All right. I have a few, but I'll try to prioritize here. So first of all, thank you to all of you for your work. It's a tremendous amount of time to be a school board member, so I feel a lot of empathy for the amount of time that you put in. I really do appreciate. And I also, as someone whose field of work is looking for facilitated ways for people to come together and consider different options that they might have thought they were going to consider on the way into the room. I'm really proud of you that you worked to that point because that takes a lot of intellectual humility and personal sacrifice to do that. So I have just a few, a couple of questions. I want to start kind of following up on this one in terms of a little bit. I'm, I'm curious because I'm both a qualitative and quantitative methodologist in my work. And so I read it all, highlighted a lot, marked a lot of things, and realized the complexity. And as a systems thinker, I appreciated that as well. And I think the high-level recommendations are super helpful. I want to ask one about process because one of the recommendations that came up is about the idea of building closures. And we know that is deeply impactful in so many ways to the community that's been expressed already. What would you see as, having now experienced this, and we don't have another whole year potentially to think about this, what would you prioritize as a process for moving from where you ended? for moving from where you ended in the recommendation, which is reduce the footprint, to a healthy space for our community as a whole? How do we get to that? What do you think your neighbors with and without kids in the schools, renters or homeowners, what do you think they need for that to happen for if, you know, if, so I guess I, I appreciate that. The recommendation, I need a sense of what's the process on that because when you read the appendix, the appendices, both the quantitative and qualitative data, there is a wide menu of possible ways forward from that. So I want to hear, you know, just a few representations of if we're going to do that, what would be your approach? How would you do that in a way that's going to work for the community this genuine? I don't mean specific naming of facilities or even specific naming of models, but what would bring people into that from your sense, having worked now together as a year? Or this, over this year? Yeah, please come on up and give us a few ideas.
My name is Brian Hert. I would suggest you put it on the administration staff. I think what we've heard from them is they're, they've got lots of great ideas. They're the experts in the data, really. I think some of us have tried to, you know, become experts in little bits ourselves, but like, I'll say like, I don't know all the detail. I don't know all the implications of closing a middle school and like doing, you know, K through six, but like, I think those are good ideas that we should explore. So I would really put it on the administration. I think what would galvanize the community around it is, is as you said, like, bring the, bring the whole package together, right? Don't just say like, hey, we're making this one-off decision to do this thing. But just like say, hey, we've got a vision for what we need to do. We're making hard choices. We're changing the footprint. We're changing the borders. We've, we've kind of, you know, everyone's in this together. Everyone's affected. We're asking for this to help sort of us make that vision reality. And then the community has that whole picture that they can go forward with and say, yes, you know, to, to Dr. Means, to your point, like, it's the community's choice, right? Like, you get to put it in front of them. It's not about like who gets reelected. It's just like, but put, you know, come up with that plan, put it together and put it in front of the community. I think that's the best way to sort of galvanize support around it. And then obviously like explain the rationale, like how you got there, right? Because there's, there's an endless amount of things that could be pursued, an endless amount of options. But I think if you, if you put together something that, and put it to the community, it's well thought out, I think you can get support.
Thank you.
Pass each other over. I was going to say some of this in my final five minutes, but we, we did a DOT survey at one point in the fall process. I don't think that was included in the final report. Was it Paige?
It's reference.
It's reference, but it's not in there. Okay. This is not my one minute.
On page 10 of the final report, it says it's in the appendix and it is inadvertently not in, so we will make sure it's edited.
Glad I brought it up. Because the DOT survey is really important. We conducted this exercise where we were asked, there were a bunch of scenarios and we were asked to put little color-coded dots on what we wanted to see happen. And the overwhelming majority of task force members thought at least one elementary school could, should close. And then that all kind of just disappeared. It just didn't go anywhere. And then in January, a task force member presented a K through six, seven through 12 model that was intriguing to a lot of us and we voted to request more information for it to be modeled out. And we didn't really hear anything about that. I asked Dr. Means for some follow-up and said, when are we going to hear about this? And he said, in April. So it took three months. I believe it was M.D. Rolffers that put together this scenario. I believe they're the architects who build the schools. So there's kind of, you know, they stand to benefit from putting this model together. That scenario came to our emails like days before we took the survey. I don't even know if every task force member even saw that that scenario came to their, their email. It was a scenario for $380 million for this model. K through six, seven through 12, $380 million. I initially was in favor of looking at this. When I saw the price tag, I said, absolutely not. So there may be some people in this room who voted in favor of that being a priority without realizing it was $380 million. I think that's really important. So Dr. Worley, I don't, I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question, but I know in particular, and I said this to Dr. Means, I did not think it was appropriate for the task force to say, you should close X school. That's not on us. It never should have been on us. So I think I agree with, I think it was Brian who said it should be on the administration. We collectively believe that this footprint should be reduced. We are not in a position financially to have a $380 million plan unless you all want to put that on a, on a referendum. But so I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question, but I think that's really important background for you to have.
It actually does help. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to add, my, I want to share my agreement with putting that decision on the district. You know, we talked a lot tonight about scaling down open enrollment or reducing the footprint, but I think maybe a better way to phrase it is, you know, or for people to understand that when you look at the resident enrollment in Wauwautosa, it doesn't match the number of spots and we have to offer in our buildings. And so it sounds really harsh when we're phrasing it the way that we are because nobody really wants to close buildings. We know we value our neighborhood schools. You know, and it's not about just getting rid of open enrollment. It's really about having a footprint for our district that matches the resident enrollment in our community. And I think, you know, with the number one theme emerging from the task force being a long-range comprehensive plan being presented before coming to ask for money, I think that is really, you know, there, there are some people that are apprehensive about a referendum because they, you know, we just had one five years ago and they're not really thrilled with how, you know, that went. But also, you know, they want to know how those, their dollars are going to be spent. And when I did present the K six, seven, 12 model, it was really just a, just a a way for, to think about how could we cause minimal upset to the community? What could the benefits possibly be? We know, we've heard the community say they don't want to close elementary schools. So it was just kind of like, like an idea tossed around. I'm not married to the idea, but I just wanted to like, trigger some creative thinking. But when I put that together, it didn't have the price tag that came back to us, but I mean, because I just used numbers that we were provided. So obviously there was much more involved with that. I do think that there are ways to consider creative solutions like that and other ones that were mentioned tonight that just don't have such an enormous price tag because the community survey results are evidence that a referendum right now at this point is not supported. An operation referendum and paying our teachers, yes, but I think that should cause us to pause and really, and I think that's really why people want that long-range plan before considering a referendum.
Mr. Morris, I'm going to ask that you be vigilant in timing one minute for their answers to this point. You're totally fine. And, and I'm glad, and then people are saying really thoughtful things. I'm just watching the time and always in that anxiety piece of everyone getting to speak and generous. You're good.
To answer Lynn's question, one thing that really stuck with me when we were thinking about like, okay, do we change a facility's footprint? Is I want to really see that we're moving forward with a plan that produces positive outcomes for kids and we're not just trying to like tighten our belts and save money. Because there were a lot of things mentioned and price tags are thrown around. But I don't think our community is going to support something that we can't show. This will optimize the learning environment for our students or our teachers. Our community is very invested in public education. We saw in the community survey and the task force survey, people are saying, we're willing to invest, but make it, you know, shoot for the moon. Give us the big plan. Let's do this in a way that we won't have to keep coming back and putting Band-Aids on. And I think that part of it is in the physical facilities, but part of it is just like in the learning plan for the students. So I think if we can show people that this is a positive move academically and for the culture of our schools, as well as, yeah, it might require an initial investment, but it solves a lot of these long-term, we need to keep coming back for money issues. I think those are two big things that the community would make me feel better about.
One minute plus. Thank you.
I would just say as far as your process, it needs to be researched well. Whatever those options are, the K six, seven, 12, does it work? I know that Dr. Means shared with us that they went and visited other districts and researched, including New Berlin, right here in town. It's an option I like personally, but at the end of the day, how are we going to raise those academic standards for our kids? Because that is really, in my opinion, one of our biggest things that we need to work on right now in school is the academic rigor and the, the level that we are asking our kids to do things and the expectations of both of our, our students and what our teachers are teaching and how they're teaching it and making sure that we are really excelling at that. Because that, in all the data that we know, our test scores have gone, gone down and all of those things. So that piece to me is really, really important. And whatever it looks like that, that you come up with, we, again, we aren't the experts. I will acknowledge that you guys are. But that part to me is really important and really exploring that data and the research and, and using something that is already proven. And how can we even, you know, don't need to reinvent the wheel, but try to build on those things.
Thank you.
Sarah Lorand. Lynn, just on some of the thoughts about process, I go back to the sheets that are up on the window and what brought us all to the task force to begin with. We talked about sustainability, excellence and community. And I think as you, we, you do that process, those were values that we could all come up with as a whole that we all believed were important. And with excellence, I think that looking at some of these, you know, models that were brought up, the K through six and then maybe a separate middle and high school. And as Danielle mentioned, we kind of got a memo. It was actually on May 1st, which was after everything had passed. That kind of broke down costs. But I think that, that still is something that could be explored. And, and another thing that could be explored in that too is, you know, do we have then a seven, eight? And are they housed at one location? And is the high school all housed at one location? And can we really maximize excellence by putting everybody in those buildings together at that higher grade? Because then we have more to offer our students.
I'd like to answer, I think, your question about how to bring the rest of our community along with us. Because one of the strongest levers I felt was the education around school finance, which is very difficult and also the wicked problems. And I know the district has been doing a great job of trying to go out there and educate the community. Mr. Breitman has put together a phenomenal presentation that took my entire grad school, school finance course and made it palatable. I know that you've put out recordings and invited community members. The engagement sessions are excellent. But I think if you're going to make these decisions and pass a referendum, really getting out there to educate the community, maybe in more creative ways, like setting up a booth at a farmer's market or going out, since not everybody's going to come to us, getting out there. Because as a task force member, I get asked quite a bit about what's going on and I find that a lot of my community members don't know, haven't been paying attention, haven't gone to any of the sessions. And so then as a task force member, I'm being an advocate and explaining, there's a website with everything. So just looking for creative ways to educate the community, that education piece has been very powerful as a task force member.
Thank you.
We'll take one more on this question and then I saw Ms. Willis had a question. I'll check in with any other board members after this one.
I think as a part of the process, it's important to, when you're comparing and contrasting different options or trying to blend options, that you also look at what the true costs of different options are. Does every school need to be underwood? You know, there, there's a certain cost to that. But can we upgrade the current schools to make them, you know, perfectly viable places to educate children and spend more of our efforts on what's happening in the classroom rather than what the classroom looks like? I think that's a part of the process that is important when you look at this. And when you're deciding, comparing whatever the amount of the facilities referendum is to the, the savings that you would get from closing that school.
Ms. Willis.
So I did want to talk a little bit about the footprint as well, but more specific questions. I'd like to know from the task force, you know, does this K through six, seven, 12 model, does that capture reducing the footprint of the 14 buildings? And also with the conversation, because I've heard a lot of different perspectives about closing schools and I've had deep extensive conversations with Dr. Means, especially realizing that Jefferson and even in, you know, the report that we got, Jefferson was mentioned quite a few times, like, is that a viable option to save the district money? You know, and the district continues to come back to us and say, no, that's not a, that's not a good option to save money. It's not going to relieve, you know, the, the financial problems that we're facing. It's not. It's going to have more detrimental effect to students than it would help solve this financial problem. So I wonder from the task force, is that your perspective? And you're understanding that if we close a school, then we're going to save money because there's a lot that goes into it and things that I'm still learning, like we're, you know, Jefferson likely won't get sold, so we're going to have to pay to maintain the building. We can't just let, let it sit there and, and fall apart, that there might be an additional cost that we didn't consider if we don't have people in the building most of the time. So, so my question again is twofold. Like, does the K six, seven, 12 model kind of satisfy your desire to reduce the footprint? And is closing one of our elementary schools, is that from a financial perspective? Like, do you think that will contribute to the financial stability of our district?
I do think closing a couple of middle schools does satisfy shrinking the footprint. It's also true when we came in, one of the, I think it's the second session, we had the consultant from the outside, somebody talked about closing schools. He said, look, in 20 years of doing this, nobody realizes the savings they think they're going to get from closing a school. Right? So the problem is, right, that, that, what's really hard about that for civilians is there's a difference of scale. Would you save money? Yes. Tens of thousands, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the face of millions of dollars of other things that you want to do. The two things don't match and it's hard to get the scale parts to come together. And that's what a larger plan would show us, I think, more clearly.
And I think that the idea with the K six, seven, 12 model would be, would also be with the assumption that open enrollment was scaled down. So sixth graders would be moving into the elementary buildings, seventh and eighth would be in the high school. So theoretically, there are two buildings that are no longer in operation. So I think when we talk about saving money, you do have, have to think of it as operation costs and capital costs too, because yes, to a certain extent, operating costs may stay very much the same unless we do in fact scaled on open enrollment. But, you know, you could consider sale of those buildings or whatever. So it, it's really, there, there's a range of, of money that could be spent and it would depend on, like, the model alone isn't going to save the money. It's, it's how it would be rolled out with the assumption that there was a scaled out of open enrollment. So.
Just a comment. I, I think one of the things I've been hearing over and over tonight that I, that I really agree with is the complexity of how all of these relationships and decisions are interconnected. And Dr. Worley started out one of her comments with the importance of thinking about is this is a system of coherence. And some of the guidance that we got early from the committee of, make sure you, I think, I don't know if Ben, I think I see Ben right behind, yep, being, being really clear as a board about what is our priority, vision, values. We've got a North Star and how does that guide our decision-making? So thank you for continuing to hit on this as, as the task force. It's, it's been helpful to hear so many different people from different perspectives and viewpoints, share that, share that common viewpoint.
Yeah, I think either my colleagues on the task force have done a good job of going through.
Sir, would you mind introducing yourself?
Sure. Brandon Henning. I am one of the members of the task force.
Thank you.
Have four kids in, in various schools and one more coming. So, so very invested in where we're going. And what I would say is that, that the, the benefits or the impact on the budget and our angle of trying to balance this budget and get to where we need to be are long, are long-term and system impacts, right? So what you mentioned about some of the short-term and upfront costs, yes, there are more costs upfront, but long-term, if we make the right decisions on open enrollment and we make the right decisions on the footprint, we can. and we make the right decisions on the footprint, we can right size our budget and still pursue the North Star. We don't need to, you know, compromise that as long as we make the tough decisions today. Right? So I I do think, you know, that's one of the reasons why there's such a strong support from the task force. We started from day one, having discussions about two to three schools closed, right? We prioritize based on the amount it was going to take to run and operate those and what our footprint should look like based on the growth of the of the population, of the resident population. We can't solve Milwaukee's problems. We can't solve all of the surrounding districts, districts problems. We need to solve the problems that we have today. And so I think if we make the tough choices, we can make, we can optimize things and be much better set up for the long term. I would support this board in making decisions you have to make today, regardless of when the elections are or what political mandate you have from the very beginning. And and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're going to have two more comments on this question. You can both go, you can maybe rock, paper, scissors for it. And then we'll go on to see if there's any additional questions from the board of students. I'm going to come and check with you two to see if there's anything that you you have.
One thing I just wanted to add. Does closing one school fix everything? No. Does closing two, three, both middle schools? No, it doesn't solve all of our problems. And that's where we get into what I said before, the dominoes and where they're going to fall. Depending on which schools you close, if you decide to close them, you have to start considering transportation. So now you're adding money in. And just to give you an idea, the footprint we have now, if my middle schooler needed to take public transportation home, it would be a 34 minute commute. All but four minutes of that would be walking. And by the time he got down to the last bus stop and walked, the crossing guard would most likely be gone at a very busy intersection. So I, this is hard. There's no one answer. It's not going to be a just close this and done.
Amora Reardon. What I wanted to just mention is that the the answers that we were given were not all interrelated. So it was more a question of would we be willing to close a school? And in the end, most of us worked, we got there. But it wasn't in conjunction with everything else. So I think the main thing that it should be taken away is that the the total facility plan is the thing we think we need. And if from that, then a school closing is the suggestion, that's where we're we're willing to support that. If from that, then going to a K six, seven, 12 model, we're willing to support that. You know, so I think the main thing is that overall facility plan is the priority to to direct the right answers.
Thanks. And if I could just follow up with a comment, I I appreciate your perspective, everyone that shared and everyone that's in the work on the task force. I know as a board member, you know, it's hard to put yourself in a position of vulnerability and scrutiny when you try to make the best decisions for kids. And I know that's what you're all doing. And I and I think there is some misconception. And I'm sure there are people out there that will just agree to disagree. But even when the board, some of the board members went against the district's recommendation to go to minimum open enrollment, because we didn't know how it was going to affect kids. I mean, that was the bottom line. It was not kid centered. And like many of you are saying, we didn't have a comprehensive plan. So what does this look like for schools like Jefferson and Underwood, who rely heavily on on non-resident students? And so I think, you know, now that we as a board are being presented with more holistic and comprehend comprehensive recommendations from community members, from the district, like, we're putting ourselves in a position to make the hard choices. And they're going to be tough choices that Heather shared are going to have domino effects. And it's it's not going to make everyone comfortable. But, you know, I hope that we do what's in the best interest of kids.
May I ask a new question?
If you're okay, I'm going to, I want to give everybody a chance. I know we're coming up to kind of the time.
I need input on this question if if there's time.
Okay. Mr. Morris, Ms. Laura.
I think you're asking this school.
Yeah. I wanted to go to the board members first.
Okay.
And I know.
Thank you for your time on the task force. I know it's a lot of work, so it's much appreciated. I've read through the whole report of task force summary. And yeah, you guys tackled a lot of big issues and big problems. A couple of members who spoke at the beginning, and I don't need an answer necessarily now, but if you could email me the answer. So several people said that there were specifics that they were hoping to receive. They didn't or data sets that they didn't receive or that they would like to. If you could just email me or if there's anything quickly that top of mind, just again, then maybe I haven't thought of those things as well. And then I thought it was, I just interesting observation that some members thought that the group, the membership was really balanced. And then other members thought that it wasn't balanced at all. So I just think that is a a good example of the whole group having the same experience, but then take having different takeaway. So that's the hard part of making all of these decisions. And I hope there's some more understanding on what the board does, because that's what we do. We get lots of data and we have to listen to community members and take a lot of information and sometimes a really quick amount of time. And then we have to make the decisions that we think are going to be best for kids. So I think you guys got a good like idea on what we have to do all the time as board members. So thank you so much for your work. I learned a lot reading the report. And so, yeah, if you just email me your specifics that you were hoping to get that you didn't, that'd be great.
I had asked for from Dr. Means, the enrollment, if the middle schools could fit into one of the high schools and the high schools could combine and go into the other high schools so that we could have one middle school and one high school. And I wasn't receiving responses as fast as I'd like, because that's just how I roll, right? Dr. Means. So I went through and pulled those resident numbers and made a scenario and moved people around and ended up making one high school with the third floor of East adjusted to, I didn't know the numbers. Dr. Means got me the number at the last meeting. It was like 22.5 million. Yes, by the la by the voting, we received that information. But we were receiving this information like on the spot at the end of the task force. So but people in the room, some of them knew about it. Some of them mentioned like the one high school model or the one high school, one middle school model. All of those things were coming forward like the last meeting of the task force. So that's like my pods, some of the plans are in this report. Some of them are in spreadsheets on my computer. Some of them, Dr. Means and the team laid out. Thank you to whoever was involved in that. But just trying to find other scenarios that aren't putting seventh graders in high school. I don't know that that's my preference, even if they have a wing or it seems number one expensive and number two, like, we're trying to make kids grow up too fast. That's my personal opinion. So just looking at other options, because we do have buildings. And maybe we could just utilize them differently. So.
Ms. Laura.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. I was going to say something, but please.
Great fridge. One of the couple of things that we didn't get, we didn't get anything from the district on slowing the rate of growth of expenses. So the $61.5 million was based on just rolling the current deficit forward. So there was no information about how the district planned to reduce the rate of growth. And then the second thing I asked for information, because I'm a data guy, I asked for information in Excel format. We got one thing that was the general ledger of the school district, which if anybody knows anything about accounting, that's great, except it's it's useless from a data analysis standpoint. So what I wanted was five years in Excel format of the past budget and any projections going forward, so I could do my own data analysis. But we didn't get that. So slow the rate of growth and include that or give us the ideas on how you're going to slow the rate of growth in the overall plan. Thanks.
And all I would say is that in my 30 years of education, I have never seen the level of data that we've produced over the course of the 10 months of this task force. And 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 I want to thank the team, because there was a, there were times where there were a lot of questions being asked of us and we answered them all except for the one about the ledger. And I know that that's been something that was out there and getting that spreadsheet. In terms of slowing down the rate of of growth, that's a, that we've said this multiple times. I'll say it again publicly, that's simple. That means we're just, we have to identify what we're going to cut and and what the reductions are going to be for the district, which then flies in the face of the the survey, community wise survey data that says, don't cut things as long as it's going to impact the academic experience of children. So how do you measure, how do we balance that? But I just, I wanted to, I I think Mr. Fritsch is correct. He he was consistent from our first meeting in June on. He he did, made that request. And I think he worked with Mr. Brightman as much as he can. And I think they tried to find a middle ground on on the data that that could be produced. But I am proud of the work of our team. We, the love, the level of questions that were being asked of asked of us. And sometimes we didn't get it to people at the rate that they wanted us to get it to them. But we did get, we did, we we tried as much as we could. And and I would just encourage the community, if they go out to the Tulsa 2075 Task Force webpage, you will see this spreadsheet that has all the links to all the questions. And it is, I would, I would urge anyone, our our most fierce critic or our most fierce advocate, I would challenge them to go out to any other school district in the metropolitan area and find that level of transparency. When I hear the word transparency, that is the symbol of transparency, in my opinion. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Means. I'm going to, can I say one thing in response to?
Please, yeah, I need, I need an answer. And we're debating, we're arguing over how good the data is. So if we have time, please let me ask my question.
I'm going to, then I'm going to go to Mr. Morris, the students, then I'll come back to you, Mr. Fries.
I just want to say as part of your process, so it's process oriented, but it's also sort of representative of the task force. When you're looking at open enrollment, one of the questions that I just thought of that I should have thought of long ago is, you know, how many open enrollment parents were part of the task force? So we're, how how many of their voices were hurt? So is considerate.
Mr. Morris, I want to come to you.
I will concede my time to the students for the sake of the evening.
Okay.
Okay, I do have something to add, and I do have a few concerns. Going back to the like third to last comment from this lady here. I think that before we talk about combining schools, like to K to six or seven to 12, I think we definitely have to talk to the students first, because I know that if you pulled Wawa Tulsa West, at least for seventh graders and the eighth graders to be in our school, everyone would say no. Because last week, we had the eighth graders come visit and like, we didn't even see them, but we could hear them from miles away. And like, I know that it's just, it would be such a distraction for like younger students to like be in our environment. And I know, like, what, going back to what she was saying, like, I do think it can cause children to mature quicker as, you know, seeing, like, at least with young girls. If you see older girls and you're a prepubescent teen, you're like, why don't I look like that? Whatever, whatever. And I just don't think, I think that should be our last option. And maybe I really don't like Tulsa East, no offense to Max. But like, Tulsa, like, combining the high schools is also, I feel like, not a great option either, because like, we're rivals, like, they're on the east side of town for a reason. And I feel like, you know, combining that, it might like, like, die, like, I don't know. It might kill the competitive rivalry. I don't know, like, having to see them every single day. But, you know, I don't know. But those are my few comments.
Student opinions are important, and we definitely would want to be data driven. And I think that there is a lot of data about people, even in this region, who are going to six through 12 schools as well as seven through 12. I just want to make sure we we take student voice into account and we also do what the task force asks, which is to look at data.
I can concur that middle schoolers, having had one in my house, are loud.
That's true.
That I feel like I have enough data on. Alex, I know you've got a question or comment.
Do you call me Alex?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. It's Ally.
Ally.
Anyways, I have two questions and a comment. I'm talking about the K four through six grade model and the seven through 12 model. I worry about the mental health of the middle schoolers. Teenagers are terrible people. And if there's, if we put vulnerable students into a place where there's already the hierarchy of seniors and, you know, the support, this like seniority level of it, what does that do to the people on the bottom? Freshmen are so well at being spunky, because they were once, like, a few months ago at the top of the hierarchy of middle school. And middle school is a time where I feel like a lot of people will look at their middle school self and be like, yeah, I sucked. And that's okay. But if we put people who aren't ready to be in such a large school, that's what I also worry about. I'm, there's a, there's a lot of mental health issues that have sparked up, especially in elementary schools and middle schools since COVID. How is, how would that affect, even if we're looking 10 years down the line? How would that affect having a a K four through sixth grade and a seventh grade through 12th grade model? And then my first question is, you guys are all parents. What do parents believe students need successfully to support them in a school setting? What, I've heard that a lot tonight. We need to do this to support students. What is the definitive list? I've heard that we need quality staff, but then I've heard that we need to cut staff funding. And then I've heard that we need to make these fancy buildings, but then the buildings don't matter. The staff matter. What is the definitive list of, these are three things that the school board should focus on doing if we, if they were to create a referendum?
Taylor, I don't think I said my name a couple of times I was here. Great questions. The first thing I want to clarify is when we talked about that model, we talked about the seventh and eighth graders being in a separate wing. So they would not really interact with the high school students. Puyaki High School isn't technically that, but they have a connected middle school. New Berlin schools both have that model. And so I just want to clarify that for you guys, because I think probably in your heads, you were thinking everyone was going to be all intertwined. And that was not the way that the model was presented. So that might give you a different perspective, you might feel the same. But I just want to clarify that piece for you. The second question, what a great question. There are lots of things, and I think my opinion probably differs from my own kids. But the biggest thing, and I've and I've spoken with this to a lot of people, is I think we need to give kids, students, student athletes, parents, teachers, we need high expectations. And the reason that I really believe this is because when we work hard at things, we gain confidence. And if you have a high expectation and a reachable high expectation, not something that's unreachable, but something that's reachable, then you can work to get that. And when you get that, what's the feeling you get? Feel good about yourself, right? I did that. I trained really hard for this track meet. I improved my time. I feel really good about that. I studied so hard for this test that I know it's going to be really hard. And now I feel good about that and I'm gaining my confidence in that. And that piece to me is missing a bit. And so that is my number one thing. I have probably a lot of bigger lists, but I'll leave it for another time. It's a great question for parents to think about, so I appreciate you asking.
Time.
And so, thank you.
Real quick to comment on the mental health of students. I think it depends on the students. So I have a student in middle school, a teenager, and he's loud. And he gets lost in there. He's small and even separated in a separate wing. He's not going to do very well. His self esteem and his mental health is going to plummet. On the other hand, I have a daughter who cannot wait to get out of elementary school in a few more days, and she is ready to go. And keeping her back another year might hinder her. As far as what do parents think that students need? I think ultimately, they need adults who see them as people before students. And from there, you can figure out all of the other needs that students need because every student is going to need something different. Because all of our students are unique. What I would be curious to know is what do our staff think? The people who are actually doing the job, elementary, middle and high school educators and leaders, have we, we asked? Have we held a conversation with them?
That was, again, a really good question that you asked. And one thing that came to my mind was a school board meeting several months back when the Eisenhower parents and PTA came here. And, I mean, I was listening to that, brought tears to my eyes to hear, or ears, to hear these parents say about how much having the extra support in the schools is important. And because we're able, and there has been a lot of conversation about, do we need all these extra administrators and things? Our district, we used to have those and then they went away. And our kids' mental health, it, I mean, from what I'm hearing from, you know, heard at that meeting, hear from other parents, those touches are important to help our kids succeed. So, just.
Ally, I apologize again for screwing up your name. I will do better.
It's okay.
I need board presidents to not screw up names, that's.
You know, Mr. Gola messed up my name at graduation last year, so it's okay.
It's a wonderful question. I, I, I would love, I think all of us, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that question with me, Ally, for a long time, is to really think about how to center that. Max, I'm gonna come to you and then Mr. Meyer, you're on deck.
So on the topic of combining the middle, uh, middle and high schools, I think there's definitely something that can be said about Ally's point of, how early do you want your students to be exposed to the problems that typically exist? Only at the high school level and they come with a higher age of students, even if there is kind of a split wing type of solution, you know, the kids are still gonna be interacting at a pretty close proximity. So I think you have to, you have to really evaluate, do I want my, my child to be exposed to these practices and behaviors to this early in their life? There's no way to dispute that this is a multifaceted issue with multiple problems. And with that, there's going to be multiple solutions. So with the findings that the task force presented, there's going to be difficult choices made and I'd like to know that what threshold to sacrificing facilities or open enrollment rates for the monetary benefits no longer outweigh the potential implications that they may have on students.
I mean, I guess my perspective, at the end of the day, and obviously it'll be affected by the referendum, whether one is presented and passes or doesn't, at the end of the day, we're gonna run out of money. Regardless of what the, how that affects students, I mean, there might be options for, you know, acquiring debt out another way, I don't know, all the ins and outs of all the ways you can potentially fund a school, but at some point, we just don't have enough money to keep doing what we're doing. So unfortunately, how does it affect students necessarily becomes a secondary question at some point, unfortunately. And, and at that point, that's when you have to make tough decisions.
I'm sorry that that's true because the adults have failed in a lot of ways when it comes to school funding and school processes. I don't know, we talk about like state budget and state funding. The reality is our state is not giving schools the money it costs to do right by kids. We as a community have a choice to fill that gap. Communities all over Wisconsin and all over the United States are doing it. They're going to referendum, they're passing referendums. Because you're right, like, we could cut all kinds of things and it would be to the detriment of students. And I think like, in good faith, most of the task force, that was a problem we're trying to solve. We want to keep these high-quality schools, we want high-quality educators, we want you guys to be supportive, had supported, have good curriculum. We're gonna need to pay for that. And that's kind of where we're at, is that this community's going to need to decide, are we willing to fill the gap the state had left us to fund these schools so that the kids don't suffer? Or are we gonna say, sorry, we're out of money, kids? You all gotta cram into a school or we're gonna have to cut teachers or administrators because we just don't wanna pay anymore. And over the next six months, you're gonna see that play out and I hope that our community comes through and is willing to fund our schools to the level that our kids deserve. And it's not crazy levels of spending. We know our district spends pretty low comparatively, so we can keep doing what we're doing. We just have to make that choice.
Fine.
Strong timing, Mr. Morris.
I just wanted to comment on some of the questions that you guys brought up because those are really great questions. And I know that neither of you were present for the presentation where we talked a little bit about this K six, seven, 12 model idea. And we did go over potential benefits. And one of the things was, you know, I think if anyone who's been a middle schooler recently or parented middle school kids, know that it's like the worst, the most difficult time of your life. I, I think it is. And, you know, some of the benefits of potentially breaking that up and having sixth graders, for example, in an elementary schools, maybe they could serve as leaders. And maybe those seventh and eighth graders in a separate wing in high school, they'd have access to more rigorous curriculum if, for those seventh and eighth graders that are taking high school math, or if they wanna push them, their academics a little bit more. But also, maybe potentially, I don't know, this is something that would have to be studied. I do kind of wonder if the maturity level would improve among those seventh and eighth graders being in a pool of older kids, even if they're not like totally mixing. Because behaviors in the middle schools in the last few years have been really challenging. So it's just a thought.
Fine.
Kinda answered your question. Students and, and, and school families are transient. You're in a school for three or four, five years and then you move on. So there's always changes. There's changes in society, there's changes in laws that society and people have to adapt to. So kids will adapt. It's a, don't get wrapped around this axle completely because it's a suggestion. It's your jobs now to take those suggestions and to study them and to come back to the community and say, this is why we will or won't do whatever we're going to do. And present that the best way you can, so the community can make, especially if given to a referendum, the community can make the decision. And Dr. Means, just to be consistent, I'll ask the same question I asked on the first night of the task force. How much money is enough?
My name, yeah, my name's Sean Lundey. I think you asked a really great question and it gets to the fundamental core of why we are all here. We are not in a position to make student-forward decisions. It would be great if we could have conversations about how we can get better and better and better and achieve excellence and do all those things. We are not in a financial position in order to do it. And we need to do all of these other things first before we can refocus. Because I think everybody here wants the Wauwatoosa School District to be like the envy of southeastern Wisconsin, if not state of Wisconsin. And I think we feel like we were there at one point and we need to get back to that. The only way we can do it is by getting our fiscal house in order, fix our budgets and do those things. So then we can refocus back on the truly important thing of doing what we need to do for students. And so I think you got, you got right to it. I will also say that if we do the things like reducing open enrollment and taking those steps to do that, we'll get there. I think we'll get there pretty quickly. And don't fall off your chair, Dr. Jess Banger. I will vote for a referendum that does support, support those things if we take the right steps to get there.
Mr. Lundey, I'm not surprised at all. You've been consistent in your support of excellence in education for a long time. Thank you.
Hi, Max. I would just say, as we think about the task force 2075, we think about what does this district, what do we want it to look like in 30 years? And so when I think of that, I think of going back to what Bill was saying earlier. We need that comprehensive plan and we need to think big. We need to think about, are we gonna, what are the, there's always gonna be trade-offs with whatever decision. So the things and concerns that you have are real. And that's with every decision that we make. There's gonna be things that are gonna be great about it and there's gonna be things that are not gonna be great. But what does that look like? And what is the best decision for our community? I don't know that we totally know that answer right now. And part of our job was to like, think about all these different things. One thing that hasn't been mentioned today that was sort of, kind of talked about in the referendum and was mentioned about a revenue generating something earlier. We haven't talked about like, having a destination athletic complex where in the grand plan, and we know this costs a ton of money upfront, I understand that. But when you think about, again, the future and how can we get there, right? It's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna be something that, here's a 10-year plan, here's a 20-year plan. What does it look like so that we can get to where we wanna be? And so, thinking big.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Meyer and then have a couple of closing comments. And then we'll take a bit of a recess and then move into the board meeting. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. So I'll set my context here. Twenty years ago, I supported open enrollment for financial reasons. Now I'm opposed to open enrollment for financial reasons. Things changed. Not me, but the finances changed. So in the K six, seven, 12 discussion, in 1991, Wauwatoosa, around 1991, Wauwatoosa went from a K six district to a K five district because the elementary schools were full. And that allowed us to continue with the same number of elementary schools. I'm, I'm assuming K six was fine back then and I'm assuming K six is fine now unless something's changed. Okay. When I look at seven, 12, if we go to two buildings, east side and west side, I remind everyone that the pressing divisive political issue in the Wauwatoosa School District in the early 90s was the east-west boundary. And if we go to a seven, 12 that does not have the four buildings, if we have the two, what are the issues, if any, with where the east-west boundary will be if we reduce open enrollment? I don't know the answer. I don't know whether things have changed, whether we could have that east-west boundary farther west and the McKinley students could all go to east again like they did in the early 90s. Maybe people on the west side want a smaller high school, but in the early 90s, the difference in size in the two high schools affected the quality of education at West High School. Would that be the same again? I don't know. Because maybe things have changed. But that's what we need to answer if we decide to go K six and seven, 12 with, oh, you know, a west complex, a single site and an east complex, a single site. I heard people tonight say, it sure would be nice if we can keep our middle school cohorts together. Well, in order to keep the middle school cohorts together on a seven, 12 deal with only two sites, one east and one west, where is the boundary going to be if we've reduced open enrollment? I don't know. That's my question. The east-west boundary, is that going to be an issue again with the, with the proposal we put forward, whatever it is going to be? I, I don't have an answer. Any input from anybody? Ask your neighbors who are senior citizens, ask them what an issue it was back then, if they still think it would be an issue now. I don't have high schoolers in my home anymore. I don't know.
On that, one thing, and again, going back to some of like, that model being presented to us, you know, very last minute, as I pondered it, and one thing that I would have loved to have a little time to look through more is, what if we have K through six and then seven and eight together like Hamilton Sussex does? And they're all at east, maybe the rec department, maybe the district office goes to east. And then to Jess's point, then maybe the site at Whitman could become a theater and a sports complex for the community. So I think, I, I just wanted to throw that out there as another idea.
Just gonna suggest that, as, you know, I don't know the specifics of the boundary line east to west, but I'd encourage us to think about, you know, putting all things on the table around all of the boundaries for the elementary schools included. So I think, you know, as we've, to me, the, the attractive thing about that option doesn't disproportionately affect one elementary school by saying, hey, we're just gonna close Jefferson. They gotta figure something out. This, it's a way to sort of say, hey, we're all in this together. We're sort of rethinking how we need to plan things. That can include all the elementary schools. The data presented to us suggested that over time, the elementary schools have become imbalanced with the number of students, the levels of open enrollment. So I think this is a chance to just rethink that and put all of that on the table.
I hope when you bring the plan forward, the boundaries are included. And the fact that you're gonna put an athletic facility on the west side and there's gonna be a seven, 12 on east and west, we're talking about the rivalry over here and all the things and the east side's getting off it. And we don't have a football field and we don't have a track field on the east side. So I understand that we want fancy and expensive, but we have to service everyone. So I hope when you bring the plan forward, it's very clear and everybody knows which boundaries they're voting for, where they're going to school, where the facilities are going, what they're losing, where they have to get to, how they're gonna get there. That's the cohesive plan that is necessary to get something through at this point.
I connect this question back up a little bit to what Lynn asked about and say, very grateful for what the district has done to make this happen. It's been nothing less than heroic, the amount of work that has gone into this process. The results are really different from listening sessions and from polls. And so as we move forward and talk about things, we convene at least parts of this group to have some kind of deliberative experience about it, right? Because there really is no substitute for that. I'm from the best pod that we had. It was an amazing experience. Others apparently thought theirs was amazing. We can have this again when we get to inflection points as plans evolve.
I think I'm gonna move us forward. What I'd like to do is invite Danielle Long up to give her final five-minute, whatever time you wanna use, but we'll, Mr. Morris, we'll let you know when five minutes is up. And then Kelly Goldman will finish with your comments and then I'll do some, a final, some final summaries of things. Remind folks on a couple of key dates that we've got coming up. And then we'll take a recess in advance of the board meeting that will begin soon thereafter.
Let me move to the mic last. All right, hit it, Morris. So we're lucky because most of my comments I already made, but I did really wanna specify that this was supposed to be a 50-year plan, so we need to be thinking in that manner. I wanna thank Paige Richards for lending credibility to the process in the spring phase. And Paige's priority was that all task force members had a voice in this process. It, it was very challenging to come into the spring phase and be given these briefs that were written and some task force members talked about the fact that they were a little bit leading and the spreadsheets were, they pigeonholed us. So in some ways, what we all talked about tonight was more than we had the opportunity to do over the year that we were in the task force. It was very difficult for us to share. The pods were great and all, you guys, I know. But it was hard to, to come up with creative solutions and talk about things together. It was, that was very challenging to me. Personally, since day one, it's been frustrating to listen to the only narrative about school funding is that the legislature not fully funding our schools. All of the blames for the legislature, no accountability for the district. It turns out money was spent and raises were given under the assumption that the legislature would come through with more money. I hope I don't need to tell everybody about what happens when we assume. The legislature didn't force the board to spend money we don't have. This is very reminiscent of the whole Jelly of the Month Club situation with National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation. Um, this is very reminiscent of the whole Jelly of the Month Club situation with National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, uh, putting all of our savings into a pool when, uh, we didn't get a raise, but we got the jelly of the month. To me, it's frustrating to watch expenditures approved over and over and over again while the district is hemorrhaging money. Fifty-five thousand dollars on an office remodel should not be a priority when we are spending down our fund balance. I've said time and time again that a good faith effort to cut unnecessary spending needs to be made before asking the tax, taxpayers for another dime. People say, well, this one add up to nine million, this one add up to sixty-one million, but actually it does. It all adds up and it all matters. It's clear from the community survey results that others feel the same way. Mike Meyer appears to be the only one who ever says no. Where is the accountability to the taxpayers on spending? Um, I wanna touch briefly on the McKinley boundary issue. Sarah, um, talked about this. I know that there's a lot of mixed opinions. Um, and I think that, I, I believe that all parents will advocate for what, um, their children will need, and I respect that. But unless you, um, are in the McKinley and West, um, directory, direction, you don't understand how moving all McKinley kids to, to east would dramatically impact West in a negative way. As, uh, the parents of McKinley alum and West students, I feel very strongly that moving McKinley students to Longfell and East will have a dramatically negative effect, effect on West. You cannot feed the only two elementary schools that significantly exceed expectations into one high school and not create one premier high school and one lesser-than high school. It'll affect sports, academics, theater, everything. Um, it really, that's not equity. That really flies in the face of what is preached, and I, I think overall, all the good of the many is more important than the good of a few. In closing, and this is really important to me, um, Chris Service is not here tonight. He's a member of the task force. I don't know if he's listening online. Um, this has plagued me for more than a year. I will say it because he never would. I sat back and watched my good friend call the liar for warning of a fiscal cliff during the last school board election. He's a senior vice president with more than twenty-five years of experience in the banking industry. And he warned that we were increasing our spending while using our fund balance to balance our budget. As a result, the financial cliff was created. Here we are now facing a sixty-one million dollar deficit, and he was called a liar. We were told we're healthy, balanced budgets for all. Um, in my opinion, Chris, uh, deserves an apology and a promise that we will do better. Thank you.
I don't have anything specific prepared, but I do wanna thank Paige. You were such a breath of fresh air and really brought together what I think all of us, like, hoped this experience would be like, more collaborative, um, and more solution-focused. And it was really nice to work with you. And I think we came up with some good ideas. There aren't, like, infinite numbers of ways we could handle this. There are sort of, you know, I know that schools function within a lot of regulations and restrictions. And I think Tanya's K six, seven through twelve idea sort of cracked open a really interesting avenue that's worth pursuing. Um, at the end of the day, like, as the task force concludes, and we hand this off to the administration and the school board, I just hope that all of us can move forward with one of the tenets of collaboration, which is assuming best intentions and understanding that the people who are going to now take all of these ideas, even though they were incomplete, and we maybe wished we had more information or more questions answered, that you all in this room and in these offices have our kids' best intentions at heart, and are going to make the best decisions that you can. And that we, as community members who have invested all of this time in the task force, deliberately move this forward in a positive way. Because what has been mentioned tonight, and what would be very unfortunate, is if a solution was rolled out, and then the community couldn't get behind it, and the changes couldn't actually be implemented. Because our kids deserve better than having us just kick the can down the road again. Um, I think that personally, my perspective is that the facilities conversation hopefully will continue and become a larger process where we can get more input from the community. Because as we talked about different ideas tonight, one middle school, one high school, K through six, seven through twelve, there are so many different dominoes that will fall from each of those. And so my hope is that the greater community, and people just need time to wrap their heads around big changes like that. I don't think most people in the community are quite as informed and engaged as the people in this room are just yet. I think they'll get there. Um, but I just hope that we can all support this process, and just, again, keep, like, in mind, we want, we all want what's best for our schools. We want to make them sustainable, successful, and we may have different ideas about how to do that. But at this point, we sort of, like, hand it off to the greater community and the board and the administration. And I have a lot of faith in what you all will do with it from here on out.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Means, any comments before I make some closing?
No.
The Wauwautosa School Board of Education, North Star. We believe in a relentless commitment to the academic achievement of all students, no exceptions. We will ensure we have excellent educators in our schools, and that they have the support and resources they need to thrive in ensuring students learn and grow to their potential. We will hold ourselves and the school district accountable by developing the resources, structures and systems for our children to thrive. I wanna thank the twenty seventy-five task force in helping us on our process of becoming and achieving that. Um, and I wanna talk a little bit about history. So in nineteen ninety-three, as a student at the, uh, Thomas Senior High School, I was able to moderate a school board debate. Nineteen ninety-three was the first year that all school budgets were locked in. From nineteen ninety-three to today, every single kid, every single year that's a Wauwautosa resident, has been worth thirteen hundred dollars less than a student in Unbrook Public Schools. Thirteen hundred dollars, every kid, every year. Well over two hundred million dollars that we have not had to invest in our kids in Wauwautosa. Number one, I will state that the legislature from nineteen ninety-three to today hasn't had an opportunity to equalize the resources available for every kid in the state of Wisconsin. They themselves have articulated that our system is broken. It is a bummer that as a community that we have to make this decision on our own. But as I've heard my colleague, Mr. Meyer, say repeatedly, if we are going to wait for the legislature to step up and make this fix, we are going to be waiting a really long time. Two thousand nine, I wandered back to Wisconsin with my family, explaining to my spouse, who is an educator, no, seriously, honey, the state of Wisconsin, no matter political party, has been progressive in its funding of education. Two thousand nine, we stopped funding schools and increasing at the CPI. We're at twenty twenty-four. We have some substantial ongoing effects. Whether it's your special education students who are not being funded to what the state articulated it would commit to, or to every kid who's getting thirteen hundred dollars less than kids literally across the street. So thank you to the twenty seventy-five task force. Because we believe in a relentless commitment to the academic achievement for all students, no exceptions. We will ensure we have excellent educators in our schools, and that they have the support and resources they need to thrive in ensuring students learn and grow to their potential. We will hold ourselves and the school district accountable by developing the resources, structures and systems for our children to thrive. As a community, we have some decisions to make. That's democracy. And I look forward to hearing what the community has to say in our level of support for our kids. With that, could I have a motion to adjourn? Uh, into, or not a motion to adjourn, a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for here?
Recession.
Recession for fifteen minutes?
You're gonna recess, and then you're gonna come back in the session for your business meeting?
A business meeting, yeah.
I think we're.
I, I think.
We're leaving the in-service.
Motion to adjourn the.
Motion to adjourn the in-service.
The in-service, yeah.
To reconvene to regular session after a break.
Yes.
Yes.
So moved. They have a second, second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Voig? Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Dr. Worley?
Yes.
Ms. Heimer O'Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jess Banger?
Yep, we're adjourned for fifteen minutes.
If you go to conference room A, there's.
Conference room A.